We'll call a meeting to order in accordance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act, Section 30-40-8E, South Carolina Code 1987 as amended. All the media in the immediate area have been notified of the date, time, location, and agenda of the meeting. We'll have our prayer on this floor, followed by the pledge by Mr. Jeffords.
Let us bow our heads, please. Father, we thank you for this day because this is the day, Lord, that you have made. God, we thank you for all of those who are here today, and we find everything, God, in the best interest of this district. Lord, we welcome our new superintendent on tonight, and God will ask you to be with him through his tenure here as our new superintendent. And God, we thank you for the passing superintendent who has left, and that he be blessed wherever he is at in Spartanburg. And we thank you, God, for everyone here. We looking for a new beginning. We looking for a new purpose. And God, we thank you for everything that you have done for the Darlington County School District, and all the employees, and everyone who makes this district what it is. And we thank you in Jesus' name, amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take a motion to approve the agenda.
Will move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. There is no citizen's comments unless that's changed. Our next regular board meeting will be August the 11th here in the training room. We have our June 9th meetings. Can I get a motion to approve our minutes for the meeting, June 9th?
So may.
Can I get a second? All in favor? Anyone oppose? Motion carries. We have some awards, looks like, here. Dr. Ferguson?
Yes, so we are recognizing Dr. Merriman Nichols to tell us about the Outstanding Performance Award.
All right, and we'll head up here to the right.
Good evening. The Bands of America, their bands at Darlington High and the bands at Hartsfield High, have earned the South Carolina Band Directors Association, SCBDA Outstanding Performance Award for the 2024-2025 school year. The Outstanding Performance Award is the highest recognition of the SCBDA gives to band programs across the state. To receive this prestigious honor, both band programs demonstrated consistent excellence across all major SCBDA events, including marching band championships, all-state and regional band auditions, concert performance assessment, and solo and ensemble festival. By earning top scores and the accumulating high achievement points in each event, the Hartsfield and Darlington High School bands have distinguished themselves among the best in South Carolina. The bands of Darlington High were under the direction of Dr. Brennan Johnson, and the bands of Hartsfield High were under the direction of Nathaniel Haroff. If they will come forward for your recognition on your principles.
Do you want to do Darlington first?
Let's do Darlington first, yes, ma'am.
Do we have their names?
Do you want to tell us where you are and what you represent the band as you come up?
Yeah. My name is Nataja Johnson.
Let's use the microphone here so we can get you to not... Just use your band voice. Yeah. Project there.
My name is Nataja Johnson, and...
What musical instrument?
Oh, I play the baritone.
All right, thank you. My name is Tuba Lina, I'm a teacher to the player at Darlington High School. Okay, thank you. What is 27?
My name is George Forte, I'm a five-year freshman player at Darlington High School.
All right, congratulations. Dr. Johnson. Dr. Johnson. Director of Band Director.
Yeah, Dr. Brennan Johnson. Fortunately, this is my last day standing here as the band director at Darlington High, but just want everybody to know it's been an esteemed honor to serve the district. Thank you all so much. Thank you all.
Scoot in, make some tape. And gentlemen, you guys in the front, kind of turn a little bit to the side. There you go, and y'all scoot in. Ready? Thank you. All right. Congratulations. All right, at Hartsfield High, you'll do the same thing, students. Introduce yourself and tell us what you play.
Oh, my name is Brennan, I play tuba, and I'm also the assistant drummer for this year.
My name is Russell, and I'm the drummer.
My name is Lakai, and I'm the high brass captain.
You're the high what?
High brass captain.
All right.
Mr. Nate Harof, Band Director.
Yes. All right, y'all scoot in just a little bit, kind of turn yourselves at an angle. Just turn yourselves a little bit of an angle there. Thank you. All right, now y'all. More. Paparazzi. That's all our recognitions for tonight. Thank you. We have our budget report.
You have your May summary budget and prior year to current year budgets in front of you. It's pretty much in line with what we projected. I actually, just before I walked in here, got the email with the June revenue figures, so I'm still projecting that we're going to have about $3 million surplus when we get through the end of June, because we've already processed 99% of the June expenditures. Right now, we're working on pushing over the new payroll figures into the new budget year, and then we'll continue pushing those in with all of the teacher salaries and those while we build the rest of the budget. So it's a process, so it's not an immediate push the button and it all miraculously comes together. So I got groups working on payroll, groups working on expenditures, and Dr. Ferguson and I have been looking at some of the numbers, so... But it's coming together. So did anybody have any questions about the May reports? There's nothing unusual. This is as I thought it would be. But our new... For all of our staff that works 225 days and over, their new pay will be in their paycheck tomorrow. So that's what my people are back there working on right now, making sure they're all correct. So that first July 15th payroll, the school staff, people who work less than 225 days, will continue to get their summer checks July 15th and July 30th, which is from last year, and then they'll get their first paycheck with the new scales August 15th. Any questions?
Questions? Good. Thank you, Ms. Douglas. Thank you, Ms... Oh, I thought you had to do it. Thank you, Ms. Douglas, appreciate it.
Well, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. It is an honor to be with you in my first official board meeting. It is an honor to serve this district, and I begin this work with a lot of respect for you and the folks in this district. But before we dive in tonight, I wanted to take a few minutes and wish a happy birthday to three of our board members. I was talking with Ms. Gore and found out it was her birthday over the weekend, and then when I dug into that a little bit more, I realized that Ms. Hassler's birthday is tomorrow, and Ms. Thomas's birthday was just a few weeks ago. And so I want to wish you all a happy birthday. Each of you brings clarity, kindness, and commitment on this board, and we want to thank you for what you do for our students, our staff, and our schools, because we couldn't do this without you. So happy birthday. I hope you were well celebrated on your days.
Thank you.
The... I'm waiting on my PowerPoint. I apologize. It's okay. I even have a happy birthday slide for all. There we go. Happy birthday. There we go. But with that, I want to dive into six kind of big topics that I want to make sure that I update you on. So Audrey, if you could go to the next slide. The first is our partnership with CareSouth. So that MOA has been signed. It was actually one of the last things Dr. Newman did before he departed us to Spartanburg. So as a part of that, there is a 45-day due diligence period that CareSouth will start looking at the building and working towards occupying that building and us transferring ownership of that property. So that 45-day period has started and will be up in mid-August for us to finalize the details of that. One thing that I did want to let you know about is, in the discussion, the CareSouth folks have expressed interest in the kitchen equipment at the school facility. We are going to be working to, if we can, be able to help transfer that, but there are some legal complications around that equipment because it's owned by the state and it's also been purchased with federal funds because it's in food and nutrition. So we're going to be working, if at all possible, to help transfer that property too, but that's not going to be an easy ask, but we are... We're working on that. The second piece that I wanted to talk to you about is the Bay Road Elementary expansion. So as you know, we voted, you voted, to house all of the 5K classrooms in Hartsfield at their home schools. That was not possible this year in its entirety because the children at Bay Road, there was not enough classroom space for them. So we've been engaged with our architect team to draw up an expansion, a wing, that would add classrooms onto Bay Road, that would allow those last five classrooms at Southside, those children zoned for Bay Road, to attend 5K at their home schools. This would eliminate the need for mobile classrooms at Southside and create the potential to expand our 4K offerings at Southside within that building. So the architects are working on the drawings for those plans, and I plan to bring those to you in August along with broader facilities plans for us to discuss around capital projects. So that is... The plan is to bring that to you in August and discuss that. The... Currently, my understanding is at Southside, there are four classrooms that are currently this year that will still be in mobiles because those 5K classrooms are in the building. We were not able to move all the classrooms inside the building at Southside, but once we are able to relocate those Bay Road children to their home school, that would allow us to be completely within the Southside facility and no longer need the mobiles there. The next piece is the federal funding freeze. So as many of you have probably seen, the Trump administration temporarily froze nearly $7 billion in federal education funding, and that was money that was already approved by Congress and was expected July 1st to the state. For Darlington County, that accounts for about $1 million in funding that we receive in Title II and Title III. Mostly, this supports teacher professional development, language services, and support for our multilingual learners. There are several positions that are also tied into that funding. It's important to note that these delays do not impact this year's budget, so those funds are for next year's budget. So we are going to be monitoring that situation very closely with the State Department of Education, and we'll keep the board updated as we move into budget discussions for next year and what might need to happen with those positions that are funded through Title II and Title III. Also, big topic is our cybersecurity incident. So as all of you know, on June 19th, the district experienced a network disruption. What we have not publicly said yet was that this was a ransomware attack. We moved quickly on June 19th. We notified SLED, who showed up on-site that day. We also engaged with national partners through our cyber insurance provider, including a law firm that specializes in the data security breaches and what laws are impacted, Cyber Reason, which is a forensics company, and then MoX5, which is a company that specializes in getting networks back up. And so we were able to deploy Sentinel 1, which is a malware detection device, on all of our devices that were on our network and run scans. At this point, there is no evidence that any data was exfiltrated. The threat actor also indicated that they did not export any data, they just sought to encrypt our data. They did make a demand for ransom payment. No ransom payment has been provided. We did not pay them anything. We do not plan to pay them anything because at this point, thanks to much, much overtime and weekends by our tech team, we are almost fully back up and operational. There are a few minor applications that are currently working their way through. Our printers and copiers were down, but those are mostly up now. There are some servers related to some door locks that have to be reset, it's just the badging piece, but we are almost nearly up, and that would not have happened without Chad and the IT team working around the clock to get us back up. It could have been much, much worse than it actually was, and I'm going to have to credit Renee for some of that, too, because as I'm sure all of you know, Renee works all the time, and so she was working on a holiday, and she came in and said, on a holiday early in the morning, that something's not right with the network, I can't access something, and that's really what alerted us that morning, to be able to shut it down and bring folks in. Where this has happened in other places, they target weekends, and those threat actors have several days over a long weekend to be in there before anyone notices it. So we were lucky and unlucky at the same time because we were attacked, but as far as this goes, we were very lucky in the outcome of that. But we are almost nearly completely out at this point.
We should thank you or not? Well, I'm glad you caught it. I was trying to be the IT person, but I called Chad and was like, something's not right. But these guys, they were amazing. We sat in the bullpen down there and watched them work, so...
And we, just so that y'all know as well, I think my understanding is that there has been at least one school district a month this calendar year that has been targeted. So I think we were number six this school year of the target of threat actors and ransomware attacks. And so it's become a nationwide epidemic for these kinds of things, but we were lucky.
Is there anything... Do you mind if I ask a question now in the middle? I don't know if I should... If I'm supposed to wait, I can't ever remember the rules. Wanda can straighten me out if I'm asking at the wrong time. But the... Is there anything that we're doing in addition to prevent something like this, or is this not really something that you can prevent?
It was not necessarily a flaw in our network that allowed them to get in. It was a vendor that we were using. There was a test account that they got access to access our network, so we've shut down that service and tried to tighten up some multi-factor authentication for all accounts coming in. But the forensics is ongoing, but there's not... We weren't doing anything that the folks who have advised us said that was a gaping hole. It was more of, they found the one weak link in a vendor who had access. So we're going to be much more diligent about not allowing outside folks into our network, which is going, quite honestly, calls some angst among some folks because you might not, for example, be able to get your own device that you bring from home onto our network like you used to could.
And will that cause... So that particular thing could cause some issues, right? Because we have... The thing that jumps into my mind is our security app that we use and everybody has on their phone throughout the district. Is that something that's going to create... I mean, that's the one that jumps into my head, but if you don't... If we don't allow devices, outside devices, is it going to create other...
We're going to work to make sure that all things that we require are available on a district-issued device.
Okay.
And there may be limited instances where we allow an outside device, but it won't be free and open forever. It may be that this vendor comes in today from outside and needs to access our network, but those credentials only work for a very limited amount of time, not in perpetuity, and we are... We try to access as much as we can from district-issued devices.
Okay. All right. Well, I'd be interested to see where that leads, you know, if there's additional costs that we may have. I'm just thinking of, you know, our staff members and things that may be using devices from outside the district. But I mean, not questioning, it sounds like the right thing to do, just see what...
And the multi-factor authentication is going to be another piece that we're going to have to be more consistent on across the board of, you don't log in one time and stay logged in for a month, for a week even, maybe even not a day, so that we can... To limit access to the network.
This is a reminder why we all have to do those annoying multi-factor authentications.
Yes, it is. It is. The next thing on that list is principal and service, so I wanted to say, last week, we welcomed our school leaders back for a week of professional development. They, as I'm sure you know, are great, great servant leaders who work so hard every day, and it was really good to be able to spend the week with them, talking about how we plan intentionally for the upcoming school year. And our theme was excellence in teaching and learning for all, and during that time, we looked very closely at student data. We talked about instructional priorities and the role of leadership in ensuring the best practices are reaching our classrooms, and we continually asked ourselves, how can we support teaching and learning? And all of those individuals showed up with such intention and really open to... We have been doing that for a long time. Does that really put the focus on instruction, or how can we think about this differently? Because we're good at this, but how can we push to become excellent? And so I was really, really encouraged by the conversations we had, and what I talked to them about is, this is my idea, it's not necessarily their idea yet, but I wanted to share with them kind of how I think about things, too. And so Audrey, if you could go to the next slide. What we talked about was excellence in teaching and learning for all, and what that means is that we are focused on each child every single day. And we're going to know that we are focused on excellence in teaching and learning for all when we have a system of excellent schools where at least 75% of students are meeting grade-level standards, and every student has a clear vision and pathway to their full potential, whether that be in college, career, or the military. And so we, particularly in our elementary and middle schools, have to lay that strong academic foundation. We've got to be able to read, write, and calculate, but it's not enough to graduate once we get to secondary. We've got to make sure that there is a vision. Kids have to know what comes next and what they are interested in, but we also have to make sure that we are making that pathway plane to children so that they not only know that they want to become a welder, they not only know that they want to become an electrician or a doctor or nurse, they have a pathway to reach that. And so that's what we talked about, and how we do that is through focusing on student success. We do that by supporting our teachers, remaining focused on safe schools, and stewardship of our resources. That was one thing that we talked a lot about, is we have limited funds. Darlington County is very lucky that we have enough, we are resource-rich, but are we investing and using those resources wisely and getting a return on investment so that every dollar has an impact on students? And we talked about how we would do that was through aligning our systems. We can't all be doing something different, we have to be working towards that common goal. We have to focus on high-quality instructional materials to make sure that we are providing grade-level content every single day to our students, and that we are supporting the professional development of our teachers, because research shows that the number-one in-school determinant of student success is the quality of the teacher in the classroom. And last but not least is that workforce development piece. Are we making plain the connections to workforce development in our academic program and making sure that we're not just doing calculus or geometry for the sake of calculus or geometry? We're connecting it to real-life jobs and doubling down on the ASCEND program, Keys to Career, or Career Time Tuesdays, so that we're making those connections to workforce. And what we also talked about is that we're not going to be great at any of those things tomorrow, but we're going to be better in a month than we are today, and better next year than we are this year, and hopefully, we're better this year than we were last year, so we've got to be working through constant refinement and continuous improvement. And what we also talked about is, how do these things, how does excellence in teaching and learning translate into the classroom? And that's the next slide. We've got to make it plain for folks. We've got to say, what is an environment that's conducive to teaching and learning? And so what we talked about was that we've got to have a focus on our time, how we spend that. Our schedules have to be simple, we've got to protect instructional time, that means limited interruptions, and sometimes it also means limited celebrations. We can't always be having parties for Halloween, followed by parties for Thanksgiving, followed by parties for Christmas and winter break. We've got to make sure that we are keeping our focus on instructional time, and our Tier One has to be sacred. We cannot pull out children from grade-level instruction to intervene. We have to provide every child that grade-level instruction every day. We also talked about people. We got to... We have to hire well, we have to keep our talent, we've got to let our coaches coach, our teachers teach, and our leaders lead, and when we invest in people, we've got to keep them close to the work. And so I know Mr. Jeffords asks every meeting, because he's done it since I've been here, how many vacancies do we have? So we have been working on that really intently. I think I have Carver Tunnel from signing all of those signatures at this point, but we've made a lot of progress. We still have 18 vacancies to start the school year. Three of those right now are in special ed at one school, and so Chuck and I talked today about how we're going to really put heads together and make sure that we don't start the school year with those vacancies all at that one school with those children going to serve by certified persons, because our people are the number-one investment in how we move things forward. And then we've got to have an instructional focus. When we teach the standards, use high-quality instructional materials, and ensure that students are engaged and on task, students will learn, and we've got to do that every day for every child. And then it's also about growth, not just achievement. And so often, we get caught up in remediation, and we've got to start thinking about how we not only remediate children, but we accelerate children, and we do that by using fluid groups, but also by celebrating effort and praising progress. It's not enough to just point out what is not happening, we've got to celebrate and praise what is happening, but also point to what that achievement line is so that we can multiply success, both for students and staff. And then the last two are around urgency. Time is precious. We have 180 days, and what I stress to principals, and I think they already knew, but I needed to say it, is that children only get one third-grade chance. And so if we don't have a certified teacher in that classroom, that's the only third-grade that child ever gets. And so we've got to be urgent and thinking about how... It can't wait to next year, it can't wait to next semester. We've got to make small changes, we've got to make changes today, even if they're small changes. We've got to keep our expectations high, and we've got to embrace the science of reading and ensure that every student gets every skill. We can't let any students fall behind, we've got to stay focused. And then our mindset has to be that there are no excuses. There are high-poverty schools across the state that are achieving. Poverty is a barrier, but it is not destiny, and so we've got to make sure that we are not making excuses, but we are trusting the process and ensuring that we are taking small steps every day. And what... And what we also talked about is that this does not mean that we are doing more, it's that we're doing what matters, and we're doing what matters consistently and with purpose. And so, sometimes I think superintendents come into the role and they talk about, how can I add this thing? Or principals come into a role and say, if we only bought this thing, we would do better. And I don't believe that personally. I think that we probably are already doing all the things we need to be doing, but we may be doing too much at an inch depth, and we really need to do less, but we need to do it better and more intentionally. And so, what, what can we take away? Where do we need to focus on? And so, they didn't boo me out of the room. They were really excited, I think, and energized about the start of what I think is going to be our best year yet. And so, I was really energized by that and looking forward to, to starting a new school year. And then, last but not least, I wanted to share with you some upcoming events. And so, this is the week before, not the week, the month before school starts. And so, this week, we will be having a ribbon cutting at the new beautiful Black Creek Ribbon, Black Creek Elementary School. And we're going to do that on Thursday at 10:00 a.m. We are going to have teachers' first day back on Thursday, July 24th. Convocation is going to be at Hartsville High School on Tuesday, July 29 at 8:30. And then, first day of school for students is Thursday, July 31st, all across Darlington County. And what I have said to Audrey, and she's going to help keep me honest, it is my plan to go to every school in the first two days and welcome and meet teachers and welcome them back. Because I have really missed the start of school. I have not gotten to do the start of school in five years. And it is like Christmas for teachers, the beginning of the school year. So, I'm really looking forward to being back in schools at the start. And if y'all are able, willing, I invite you to come along for the ride and, and see some of our schools on the opening day. And we would love to see you at convocation and hope to see all of you also at the ribbon cutting on Thursday. But, Madam Chair, that is my report. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions for anybody?
Good report.
Questions?
Yeah, sure.
I just said it was a good report, I liked the way you did it.
Thanks for the PowerPoint too. I'm a visual person. It allows you to follow along. I was just going to say, I like the way you're thinking. I'd be interested, it's more of a comment, I'm interested to see what can we take away, that piece of it? Like, what are the things that aren't adding value that we're doing in the day? Because we know, we know they're, they're working their tails off in our schools, but, but I like the way you're thinking, and I hope there are some things that we can take away that aren't adding enough value, so that our people aren't, you know, so overwhelmed. I mean, of course, there's a lot that we have to mandate, and that's been mandated to us, and it'll be, I'm interested to see, you know, where those kind of fall out. So, anyway, looking forward to hearing more.
Question?
Yeah.
Question, not, not board member input.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just have a comment on it in particular, I guess.
Talking about Black Creek, I, and the ribbon cutting, now, although this actually might not be the question for you, it might be actually a question for, for Mr. Schuler, I don't know who. But I went by there today. So, the front of that campus is quite a distance from, from the main road. Are they going to clean that out, or is this going to stay as it is?
You talking about the middle piece?
Well, you coming in from, what is that, Levensworth?
Right.
And you turn into the campus, you've got probably from here to that high school are just woods. So, I'm wondering, is that going to be cleared out or what? Because, you know, people are not going, I mean, if one of the ideas for people to see the school, that's almost impossible. And I know that's, that's a, after the, you know what I mean?
That wasn't in the plan, the initial plan.
Because we told ours, we, I thought, whether it's the back of the school, was actually going to be the front of the school, because you could see it from 52.
And Mr. Govan, I will say that I was also riding this weekend, and I thought the same thing, because I went by there, and I was like, how do I get in here from 52 and realize that's not how you get to it?
Yeah.
I believe that DOT wouldn't allow us to do that. It's my, is our, is that true? Yeah.
That's what I was going to say. Right.
There was some wetlands involved. I mean, we had to kind of change the entrance multiple times to kind of avoid some of the wetlands that was involved, you know, on that land.
Maybe that's a question we could call up the architects and just see if there's signage that we need to use possibly to better mark the entrance.
Well, I think your, your question was more about.
Seeing it from the road, we can't change that.
Well, but I mean, from Levensworth though, right? You can, are you, you're talking about, you can't see it even from Levensworth? Because of the stuff thrown out?
Cleaning it out.
Yeah, I don't know if it's clean. It's forest, isn't it?
Clean it out. I don't know what you do.
Is it forest, or is it? I mean, I haven't seen it from that, that side.
It's like a scrub.
Because, you see, when we were going out there, we were looking at it from the backside.
Coming in from the backside.
And I thought, I thought that was the front side.
No, I didn't.
Until the date, then I realized, hey, this ain't the way you get in here.
Well, maybe we'll, maybe we'll all get a chance to see it on Thursday.
Yeah.
We can ask the architects too.
Okay. Any other questions? Dr. Ferguson? All right, we've got a board member, but Ms. Thomas, you want to lead us off?
Well, I would like to welcome you, Dr. Ferguson, to, as our new superintendent. I do have a vested interest in education for our children, and looking at the slides that you presented and talking to you, it seems like you have some positive visions for our area. And for that, I applaud you, and I want to let you know that you do have my support. I was impressed with that continuous improvement slide you had up there. Things that you wanted to see ongoing. One of the things you said was utilizing resources. At some point, I would like to suggest maybe we look at more mentor programs as one of our resources. And just call me if there's ever anything I can do, if I can ever give any kind of support or else. Thank you. Welcome aboard.
I guess I already provided some. I sort of had a question of, what I, what I started with there was, I was going to ask you earlier, you know, what do you see as, but then I realized, eh, it's probably not the time. And we've got, you've got a long, a long time to present some of those things to us, what those things may be that we can, but the point is, yes, I appreciate your vision, I appreciate you sharing some of your vision with us today. I think it's important for all of us in this room and, and everybody in our district to really solidify behind a vision, and I already can see that you're, you're working toward that. So, thank you for that. And just, yeah, welcome. I don't know if I'll be able to make it out on the first day of school, but it is like the first day, it's like Christmas for teachers. It's like that, I think it's that moment of, of hope. You know, it's like the beginning of a new, of a new adventure, right? With your kids, and, and it's, it's a hopeful day, and, and hopefully, we can keep our teachers feeling that way as long as we can, or as much as possible. Because, you know, and for kids too. It's a, it's an exciting new adventure, a new day, and I guess as an adult, you forget about that feeling when you don't work every day in school. So, I think that was a fun way to describe it. Anyway, thank you. Thank you for everything so far. I've enjoyed talking with you, and I'm looking forward to, you know, working with you for the next few years.
Mr. Jeffords?
Welcome. Glad to have you. We have to work together as a team, as everyone knows. If we don't work as a team, it makes being successful very more, you know, very difficult. So, you know, we don't always agree on everything, but we're still a team, and we have to come together as a team to make, make this district work. And I think we, we've got a good team, and I think we can, can do that. I appreciate what everyone does, and looking forward to a good school year. You've already touched on the vacancies, so I guess, we've got 18, so.
Show your steam there.
He's down to 15 now, he's got three more to sign.
Oh, really? Okay, well, that's good. So, we're, we're probably better off now than we normally are, right?
Right, it puts us in the range where, when we get around 10, 12, we can really rely on our partner, staffing companies, to get a.
A certified person, even if you start with a sub, that can be certified, so we'll be off to a good start.
No, I appreciate what Chuck does, but he works hard at it, and everyone does, for sure. How about our branding? How are we coming on that?
So, we are, we are moving forward on it. We're really excited about what we've accomplished so far. We're doing a little bit of tweaking to kind of match what we had with some new ideas and new direction. So, we're, we're getting that together and hope to have something to present to you guys soon.
Mr. Govan?
Well, only two things. One, I wanted to thank all of you, and Dr. Ferguson, for the flowers that were sent today to my wife on her returning from surgery. And secondly, and I should have done it when he was here, I wanted to thank Brandon for all the work that he's done while he's been here as the band director. Because he's really brought that band out. He's also brought Laura Rice here to Darlington County, to Darlington High School, and he works tirelessly with that band. And I, you know, I've said that to him, and I wish him the best of luck at Benedict. I'm sure he'll do the same thing there, but I just appreciate all he's done. That's it.
Ms. Carrery?
Yes, again, as everyone else has said, I welcome you to our district, and I've really appreciated receiving your weekly updates. I really like the way you're formatting them, they're easy to read, easy to understand, and I look forward to working with you.
Me?
You are.
Ms. Doris, you're on the clock.
I'm on the clock. Dr. Ferguson, what can I say? Thank you for stepping in the position to come here as our new superintendent. I appreciate your work, and I see your vision. And I'm glad to see that the children are becoming the purpose, and that we're looking forward to making sure that their needs are being met, and that we're not holding anything back from them, and that we're going to give them a quality education. Because we don't want any children graduating from Darlington, Darlington that can't read or can't write. We want children to be able to go to college, military, or in the workforce. And also, you know, Brandon, Dr. Johnson is going to really be missed, not just in Darlington, but in the community and with the children. Because he has done so many great things, helping them get band scholarships, and, and he was a great mentor to our children. And he's going to be deeply missed. And I already know that Benedict College is in for a treat, but he got his training here in Darlington. He got his training here. This is his beginnings, and I'm pretty sure that he won't forget us, and I'm pretty sure that he'll come back from time to time. And I would like to wish, I'd like to thank all the staff that has come back for the year. I thank all the new staff that's coming, and I look forward to a good school year. I thank you Renee, I thank you Dr. Nichols, I thank you Dr. Miller, Ms. Audrey, you know, you know I got you.
Mr. Schuler?
Mr. Schuler, and I don't know your name, Jim.
Mr. Wilson.
But thank y'all so much for what y'all do for this district. I know, like Renee, weren't for you, we wouldn't have caught the cyber attack, we wouldn't have got it that quick. We would have got it, but we wouldn't have got it that fast. But thank you so much, and I appreciate all of you all, the principals and all what you're going to do. Ms. Gerke, I'm hurting with you, because I know you've missed Brandon.
I'm just thinking that I'm so glad, I just texted and told him to watch. Because literally, as we were walking in, I was like, Brandon, you cannot cry in here tonight. And he's like, if they talk to you, you're going to cry.
I know, I know.
We've got about this a lot together.
I knew, I was holding back.
I'm kind of glad he, I told him to watch it later, so he can watch it privately, but his heart is in Darlington.
Yes, it is.
It doesn't only, not going far, and we're going to keep him close to us for sure, but there's just not enough to thank him very much.
I know. But, but thank you for taking care of Brandon, because he couldn't have did all that without you. So, thank you for taking care of him the years he was here. I'm looking for a great year, I'm looking for some great things to happen. You know, I asked you your age, not because I'm talking about age, but, you know, we got the wisdom, but you got strength. That's what the Bible says, and we appreciate you. Thank you. I'll finish.
Yep, welcome to your first meeting of the meeting.
It's bad, Ms. Hassler's here, and it wasn't you going at it. Well, like we thought for the very first meeting, but looking forward to a good year. You know, y'all were talking about it being like Christmas, oh my gosh, I love going and buying school supplies. It is something just about that. Everything's fresh and new, and it's full of hope and opportunity, and so, looking forward and expecting good things. Renee, I mean, I work in an industry where, like, cyber is life for us at the power plant. I mean, you, it, the fact that you immediately knew something was wrong, well, the fact that you were working, I don't, I mean, I apologize, on your behalf, but the fact that you immediately knew something was wrong and then reached out, and y'all took it and ran with it and took it seriously, I mean, it really did save this district a lot of, oh, I mean, it was just a headache.
Cockling.
Maybe money, and, you know, things just, it, it's just remarkable, so cannot understate that. And as far as Brandon, is he watching? I'm watching, I'm speaking to him.
I told him to go back and watch.
You gave us stuff to cheer about and be excited about when our football team was struggling. I mean, I'm not even being funny, I mean, like, he gave us, he gave us excitement and a reason to want to come, still come to football games. I mean, the band was everything, and we're going to miss them so much. I'm one of his biggest fans, so thank you for everything that you did for Darlington. Go do great things, that's what I told him when he left. Can't wait to see what he's going to do. Let's see it.
Dr. Ferguson, again, welcome. All of that up there was just my love language, just soaring, you know? Everyone who knows my tenure on the board and where my focus is, everyone has theirs, and this just speaks to me, and it just reaffirms the decision that this board made to, to put you into this position, and we welcome you and, and look forward to the things that you're going to do. Again, Chad, I, we've all recognized you and thanked you, and of course, Renee for catching this, but also, please extend our thanks to your team, because it, I'm sure it was just an all-hands-on-deck scenario, and so, you know, what y'all did for the team, you know, we greatly appreciate, so please extend our, you know, our thanks, the board's thanks and the district's thanks for everything that y'all did. I'm sure it was, you know, you prepare, you try to prepare for those things, and when they happen, you know, you, you know, you kick, things kick in, and so, thank you for that. So, with that, I think that's all I'll say, and we'll move on to our personnel actions. I get to take a motion to approve our personnel actions?
Madam Chair, would we accept the personnel actions? And if there's an addendum?
No, there's no addendum. Can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Well, I do have some executive session material. I'll take a motion to enter into executive session.
So, I need that we enter into executive session to discuss personnel issues and contractual matters.
Can I get a second?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. We'll move into executive session.
I'll take a motion to come out of executive session.
I'm going to say we come out of executive session.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh, yes.
Anyone opposed? We are out of executive session. No actions were taken, no votes were taken, and we will take a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I make the motion that we do.
Can I get a second?
That's okay.
All in favor?
Alright.
If anyone opposed, we are adjourned.